We are recording, sir.
Okay, I'll even bang my own gavel. Good evening and welcome to the March 22, 2023 Regular Hybrid Planning Commission Meeting. I'm Mike Murphy, the Vice Chair. Tonight's Hybrid Planning Meeting is being brought to you in person by Zoom, as most of our lives are now. Welcome to all and thank you for joining us tonight. Commissioners, please have your microphones on and for the roll call. Deb, if you could please call roll.
I will. Thank you, sir. For the record, Chair Daniel Hubbell is absent this evening. Vice Chair Michael Murphy?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Kuz here. Commissioner Curry. Commissioner Curry is also absent this evening. Commissioner Rashis?
Here.
Commissioner Regib?
Here.
And Commissioner Boatsman here. Thank you.
So there is a quorum present, so we can proceed. The first item of business is appearances. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the commission about issues of concern. Please note, we have two public hearings coming up next on our agenda. So if you would like to speak to the issues in those hearings, please consider holding your comments until we get to those items. Deputy Clerk, is there anyone who has signed up for appearances that wishes to address the commission?
Yeah, one moment, please. I want to make one of my cameras is doesn't need to be on. There we go. Okay, yes, we do have four individuals signed up this evening. The first on our schedule this evening is Audrey Kovern.
Okay. Tonight's agenda will include in-person public appearances and remote public appearances via Zoom. Individuals wishing to address the commission, they do so in person or by Zoom or telephone, provided they've registered with the deputy clerk by 4:00 PM today. When it's your turn to speak, you will be called by name. Remarks are to be addressed to the commission as a whole and not individual members or staff. Please speak audibly, state your name and city of residence for the record. There will be a timer on the screen. You will have three minutes to speak. When your time is ended, I will thank you for your comments and move to the next speaker or item of business. So if you want to call the first speaker, Deb?
Excuse me. I'll reintroduce her and then she can introduce herself. I believe we have Audrey Kovern. Excuse me if I'm mispronouncing that. Thanks. Okay. And your city of residence?
Mercer Island. Thank you.
Right down the street. I could have walked here, but I didn't. Lazy. Good evening. I'm here again. I was here last month. My name is Audrey Kovern and I do live on Mercer Island. I'm the past president of Herzl Near Tamed congregation over here, and I'm the current chair of the Strategic Planning Committee. And I'm here to talk tonight again in support of Herzl Near Tames, which I'll call HNT. Request to add schools to the approved list of building options for a B-zone property. My colleague Anjali Grant, our architect, she's going to do the details because she's much smarter than I am and she's going to talk about the analysis. I'm just here to provide context to the discussion. So as we explained in the February meeting, our request is to amend the city code to be consistent with the Mercer Island Comprehensive Plan with respect to be with what respect to what can be built on a B-zone property. And specifically, we're asking about K through 12 schools be included since we believe it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and it's a use that's consistent with the neighborhood. And just to remind us again, because I'm sure you've heard 8,000 things since, HNT purchased the property in 1999 to ensure that whatever was built on the land would be consistent with HNT's uses. And over the years, we've looked at various options for the property focusing on our own building needs and our economic needs. Because as a nonprofit, as you know, we have to figure out ways to sustain ourselves. And my hair would be gray after all these years, except I go to a really good hairdresser. About two years ago, we started talking with a private Jewish school about sharing this property, an arrangement that would provide us with the classrooms we need because ours are in need of repair for our religious school as well as financial support for our operations. And to enable this partnership to go forward, we applied for the code amendment, which is here, which is here today to talk about adding it to the B-zone. So last month, we were here again and the request was taken up by this commission. We had a really a really robust conversation about it. And there was significant interest in allowing the school. But the commission asked the planning department to present options for adding some building restrictions for schools. And so for the last few weeks, Allison Van Gorp, did I say that right, Van Gorp? Okay, thank you. I was all worried. Has undertaken a comprehensive look at what types of restrictions would be appropriate, yet not be so restrictive as to eliminate the building of a school because it's a really small parcel. Working with our architect, Anjali Grant, Ms. Van Gorp has created the amendments which she'll present tonight. And we just want to say that we really appreciate her diligence preparing this report and his proposal. I'm going to leave it up to Ms. Grant to explain all that. But I just do want to thank Ms. Van Court for her efforts on the issue and her willingness to work with Anjali Grant to seek common ground, which was really, really wonderful. That being said, our first choices still are original requests, which is to add the B's schools to the B-zone without any restrictions. However, if the planning commission believes that there's a need for the restrictions, we would request that the commission approve the list set forth tonight by Ms. Van Gorp, as they will allow us to build a school, although not originally as we envisioned, but at least it could be done. And so if, as I've said in my past testimony, there's a significant urgency to making this determination because the school we're seeking to partner with needs to move out of their current site by 2024. So we're on a short timeframe. So in conclusion, we believe that a school is a much better use of the parcel than other currently allowable uses such as theaters, restaurants, retail stores, et cetera. And in addition, while we are absolutely aware of and 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 ready to do things like a traffic study, one good thing about working with this Jewish school is that they'll be able to use our large property turnaround area, which is quite huge. So it will probably almost completely eliminate any congestion on East Mercer Way. Thank you for your time and consideration and we're here to answer any questions and I will turn it over to our architect, Anjali Grant. Thank you. Vice Chair Murphy, just as a as a point of order, and it's not a huge huge issue. The names that I gave you were actually for the public hearing. It's fine that our first speaker spoke under appearances, but I think for a cleaner process, if we could close out appearances and actually open
Ah, okay.
Hearing, which is later on in your script.
Yes.
No, that's totally not necessary, but I do. I do apologize for the confusion and thank you for your patience.
Yeah, she'll have to repeat that verbatim.
Yeah, sure. With the same pauses.
Yes, yes.
Just a point of order?
Certainly.
Is it, would it be possible to just continue the public hearing now and then go to public appearances? Just so that we have continuity of?
We could, but technically we need to actually open the public hearing and provide a time.
Got it.
And then close it. So I'm, yeah, my apologies for the confusion. I do appreciate everybody's patience with this. Nonetheless, it's all on the record and recorded. And I promise I'll see you.
So just to clarify, Deb, the there are no further general appearances. All the rest of the speakers are speaking to the agenda items.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so so Victor, I I think your concern is not not a concern. If that makes sense.
It's, and I would also add, it's not uncommon to have people show up to speak to address something that's going to be addressed during a public hearing and actually speak during appearances because they have other commitments. And so this is still a part of the meeting record. It's just not between the opening time of the public hearing and the closing time. So well, it's almost like a Scrivener's error in the meeting.
Okay, so that being said, there being no further general public appearances, the next item is a public hearing. And that is public hearing for ZTR 22-001 2022, a zoning code amendment related to the permitted uses in the business zone. This public hearing is to deliberate proposed amendments to the development regulations for the business zone that will allow public and private schools as a permitted use and to potentially add conditions and performance standards to that. Individuals wishing to make public comment on this item may do so in person or by using Zoom. The public hearing is now open as of 6:11 PM. And as I understand it, Deb, there are people who have signed up for public comment and wish to address the commission. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir. I believe the next person scheduled to speak is Anjali Grant.
Okay. And again, those wishing to provide public testimony, please speak audibly, state your name for the record, limit your comment to three minutes. And so let's proceed.
Great, thank you. My name is Anjali Grant. I'm an architect in Seattle, working with Herzl Near Tamed to explore options for their property. As Audrey mentioned, the synagogue purchased a parcel of land, Zone B, in part to protect and preserve the character of their neighborhood. Herzl would like to be able to develop that parcel in a way that's consistent with the values and character of their institution and compatible with the residential character of the of a school. They are currently in very preliminary conversations with one small school. This is an independent inquiry, not related to any other development on the island to develop, to support Herzl's future. The Mercer Island Comp Plan designates a commercial office zone that has a variety of uses that are compatible with the residential character of the neighborhood, including public and private schools. Within the municipal code, there are two commercial office zones, C, O, and B. We are asking municipal code be amended to be consistent with a comprehensive plan and permit schools within the B-zone. Our first preference would be simply to amend the code to include schools with no zoning changes, alternative A. Our second preference would be to amend the code to include the draft language this proposed by planning staff or Allison, essentially. Alternative B, the the code provisions that she's she's included are consistent with other portions of the code that deal with schools. We think they're appropriate. Consistent with the intent of this alternative, we respectfully ask that clarifying language be added that makes it clear that setbacks are not required between lots that are held in common by the same owner and or part of the same development. I'd like to address a couple of general areas of concern that have come up in prior meetings. One is traffic and parking. The existing Herzl property has a large parking lot. Our intent would be to minimize the amount of new parking and new asphalt on the site. If possible, to take advantage of schedule to make use of the same lot as is as the HNT property. To that end, we would be undergoing a parking and traffic analysis as part of any significant development. It is not possible to do this work proactively as it depends heavily on the number of visitors and the times of day they may be arriving and departing. Secondly, residential zone. This came up at the last meeting. There have been suggestions that we simply combine this lot with the existing lots owned by Herzl Near Tamed and pursue a conditional use permit to build a school on the resulting residential lot. However, the lot coverage limits on residential zones effectively mean that no building area can be added to the existing residential property. To summarize, our position is that a school use is no more impactful than many of the uses that already exist in B-zone properties. Permitted uses include preschools, theaters, restaurants, retail, group housing, and museums. As you evaluate this amendment, please keep this in mind. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, the next person on our list to speak this evening is Mr. Gardner Morelli.
Okay.
Are you addressing the next item?
Next, here.
Okay. Mr. Goldbach, are you addressing this one or the next one?
Put me off of this one.
Okay. You are up next, sir. Thank you.
I'll take less than three minutes. My name is Matthew Goldbach. I live here in Mercer Island. And I've addressed this issue before with you folks. So a couple of things. One, without some kind of current application or concurrent application, it's actually building a school on the applicant's property for it's somewhat impossible for surrounding neighbors, including the city and citizens in general, to comment with no sense of size, scale, intensity of use. What are we talking about? It's how do you comment on a nothing burger? That's why I think, and I proposed in the last meeting, using a cup. With a cup, it'd be a useful tool for everybody. Because for the for the applicants, they can propose, this is essentially what we want to do. The city and the residents can take a look at that. And you could start talking about setbacks and all the rest of those types of things with an understanding of what we're talking about. The if I'm not mistaken, all private schools on Mercer Island are on cups. I don't think any school here is not. So we'd be stepping away from a norm if we didn't if we didn't use a cup for for a private school here. The question is for the for the commission is, have the property owners, business owners in and around the B-zones been notified of the potential zoning change? And have the residents around these zones been notified of the potential change? If not, when will they be? The next, as part of the CFZ process, the applicants were required to determine the proposed use, if the proposed use meets the TCO levels of service. That's actually never been completed. And Herzl's part of that. They were one of the applicants. It hasn't been done because of the COVID and waiting for things to get back to normal like we all are. But for the moment, the same intersection that's been a problem was a problem in 2019 is a problem now. All right, still hasn't been examined by the city or by by the people that that live there. I think a traffic study has to be has to be done prior to making amendment to the code. I could be wrong about that, but I believe that's the case. Because you're changing, you're going to change the intensity of use. In the packet, the CPD requests feedback on numeric standards that they proposed. In fact, to quote, due to the size of property in the B-zone, it's possible that smaller setbacks may be appropriate, given the scale of development. But that what is going to be possible? Without more specifics from the applicants, it's catch 22. It's the cart before in front of the horse. Might it might just be that B-zones were never meant to have schools. That's option C. These are really small parcels. No one's ever considered having a school on one. And no one ever did. So I can understand why Herzl wants one. And I honestly say that I think in I think in B, there's probably a way to do it. But I think rushing it and approving it without more information would be would be an error. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb, anyone else on this matter?
No, sir. You can close the public hearing.
Okay. Okay. Thank you all for your testimony. The public portion of this hearing is now closed at 6:20 PM. We now move to the next item on the agenda, the joint public hearing for ZTR 23001 2022, a shoreline master code amendment. This public hearing is to deliberate proposed amendments to the shoreline master program related to the uses permitted waterward of the ordinary high watermark. Individuals wishing to make a public comment on this may do so in person or by Zoom. The public hearing is now open as of 6:21 PM. Is there anyone, Deb, is there anyone who has signed up for comment that wishes to address the commission?
Yes, sir. We have one individual signed up and that's Mr. Gardner Morelli.
Okay. As I said before, anyone wishing to provide public testimony, please speak audibly, state your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Gardner Morelli. I'm a Mercer Island resident. I am here on behalf of the Mercer on Beach Club in response to ZTR 23-001. On behalf of the club, we want to thank you all as well as staff for understanding our predicament and helping work with us to find a solution. What we initially believed was a simple fix to an issue within the current code has we have discovered after multiple engagements with staff, the risk of future unintended consequences being high. We want to make sure that the fix gets us to a place where staff can accept and process our application later this year. We want to avoid the risk of needing to come back to you all and counsel for another code amendment. Unfortunately, the path to solving the dilemma is not easy and will take more time. As you know, our marina is at the end of life and and in order to do this extra work, it's been communicated to us by staff that will take an additional five to six weeks and include additional public engagements. We just want to repeat that understanding that it's a limited amount of extra time is very important since we have been dealing, trying to figure out how to deal with this for over three years. And staff reports that they will prepare a draft of development standards for the planning commission to consider in April and a public hearing on the proposed development standards would most likely be scheduled in May. Staff has defined this approach as option B2 amend so a number of tables and to to allow us to use a scup. And Mercer on Beach Club supports the B2 approach. And here are the reasons why. Option B1, which is the other option, we believe poses too many additional challenges as we're going through the permitting process. And that at the end of the day, our permit might not be approved. And we would be back here trying to figure out how to solve it. Number two, staff is committed to doing the extra work and establishing the category within Table B and the associated standards for a non-residential marina in the five to six weeks, and we can work with that timeline. Number three, the approach will address the different needs of a larger marina, which we are versus the current code, which really focuses on residential marina, the residential piers and docks. The city will no longer have to try to force Mercer on Beach Club, Shore Club, and Covenant Shores to a residential standard, which we think is important. Number four, no need to reinvent the wheel. We can take this time and take advantage of all current state standards such as Chapter 220 660 WAC. It's a Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife hydraulic code. There's where it doesn't conflict with the current SMP. And using WDFD's regulations to protect fish and wildlife, they use the most current and best science, technology, and construction practices, which can be amended, which are amended over time, which will serve as a mechanism within this for the city and allow this code to evolve as the standards and sciences continue to improve, which we think benefits everyone. And number five, option B2 is a narrow approach. A number of you spoke about this in the February meeting and it it addresses and identifies the current gap in the code versus trying to solve maybe problems that aren't there today. And by doing the narrow approach, it also doesn't open up the city for possible future unwanted, possible unwanted uses along our shoreline. Because it would be defined as unlisted uses. The Mercer on Beach Club stands ready tomorrow to sit down with staff and walk staff through our design, share the science and the reasons for our current design and to help staff develop the category of standards. Staff has been very accessible and willing to dialogue with us up to this time on this topic and we truly appreciate their time and energy. We believe that this is the only way to help ensure that B2 is completed again in that five to six week period. We thank you for your time and your ongoing support.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
No, sir. I don't believe we have anyone else in the audience wishing to speak.
Anybody else on Zoom?
Not that there's there are two individuals in Zoom, but neither requested to speak this evening.
Okay. Okay, that means the public portion of this hearing is now closed as of 6:26. And we can move on to, normally, the first item of regular business is approval of the last month's meeting minutes, but due to a slight miscue, we didn't have those in the packet. So we will bump that item to the April meeting. That brings us our next item, regular business, which is ZTR 22-001, adding schools as a permitted use in the business zone. And Allison, welcoming you for your presentation.
Thank you. Just give me a moment to get my presentation up here. Okay. I think it's coming. Let's start. There we go. I'd like to make this thing go away, but I don't know how to do that.
I'm seeing it.
Yeah, okay. I was just trying to get there's like a menu bar that was blocking part of it, but I think I minimized it now. So, all right. The purpose tonight is to review the draft code amendment that we've prepared and discuss the the draft development regulations for the business zone and and get feedback from the commission. Potentially, you could make your recommendation tonight as well. So our process here is, like I said, we could make the recommendation tonight. Otherwise, at the April meeting, we can come back with a revised draft if needed. And once we have a completed recommendation, I'll be doing the SEPA review and notifying the Department of Commerce of this code amendment. And we're planning to bring it to the city council for their review in the May or June timeframe. All right, so just a little overview of where we've come. Herzl Near Tamed promotes proposes an amendment to business zone to add public and private schools as a permitted use. The business zone has three areas within the city. They're fairly small. And it currently permits a variety of commercial uses, as we've heard, and there's fairly minimal development standards in the existing code. I also brought a few photos of these B-zone sites. I thought that might be helpful since we were talking about it a little bit last time. The one in the northwest is this small commercial building that has a bakery, a hairdresser, and I think some offices. The one just to the east of Town Center and Island Crest Way is a larger office building. I think this kind of demonstrates some of those more intense kinds of uses that are possible in this zone. And then this is the front of the HNT site and the business zone parcel is kind of this area with the trees. So that's where we're proposing to change or to add schools as an allowed use. And once again, I'll get into this in a little more detail in a minute, but Herzl Near Tamed has four parcels on their property. Three of them are split zoned and deemed to be in the our 9.6 zone. And this one on the corner is the the B-zone property. Yeah, sorry about that. Put those over there. Yeah, I have another map I'll show in a little while that zooms in on this a little bit more. And has some dimensions.
Just for clarification. What we're talking about here in general is just that section that that says Herzl near to me. The there's I've seen R9 and then a CO. That's not a part of this, correct?
That's correct. The part that would be affected by this is just this sort of triangular piece right here. Okay, so I'm going to take these alternatives slightly out of order. So A was the original proposal from HNT. So A was the original proposal from HNT and it would simply add schools as a permitted use to the zone with no additional standards. And alternative C is no change. So that literally means we do not change the code and it would not allow HNT to build a school on that B zone parcel because it is not currently a permitted use. Okay, so alternative B, this is where we're going to spend majority of our time the next few minutes. I'm going to go over the highlights of the draft code amendment that I've proposed. It would add public and private schools accredited by the state for compulsory school attendance subject to a set of conditions and standards. And those include setbacks. And I, you may have seen in the packet, there was a summary of all of the code sections that pertain to schools in the code. These were pulled from some of the standards that are in the PI zone for public schools. It's a forty-five foot setback from property lines that are but single family zones, a thirty foot setback from public rights of way and a fifteen foot setback from public parks. This, like I said, is similar to some of the standards for public schools. I'll talk about that a little more in a moment. I'll stop there for right now. The second piece is screening. Another section of the code already requires a ten-foot screen around the perimeter of the property. However, this adds some more specific details to what is involved in that screen. The other standard is very general. So it needs to be composed of trees, bushes and ground cover that produce an eight-foot tall visual barrier in all seasons within three years of planting. And it must have at least one tree for every twenty feet of landscape perimeter. So it gives us a lot of clarity about, you know, what needs to be planted, how dense and that kind of thing, so that there's no confusion over what a partial visual barrier is. And then the final thing is requiring a one-quarter acre playfield. And this is the same standard that's included in a couple of the other school code sections. So some of the things I'm looking for feedback on around this is do these proposed standards, whoopsies, provide adequate separation and screening from the surrounding uses? Would smaller setbacks perhaps be more appropriate given the scale of the B zone properties? I'm going to talk about that one a little more in a minute. I've got some maps I'd like to show you. And then how should internal lot lines be handled? We'll also talk about that some more. And finally, are there any additional standards that should be added? Are there, is there anything I missed that you believe should be regulated? Okay, so this is the map I was talking about. Let me, I'm just going to minimize the videos there. And I copied the section of code here at the top, which will be important in a minute. So as I had said before, this B zone splits several of the HNT parcels. So parcel one, three and four all have split zoning. And parcel two is completely in the B zone. So for example, with that standard that I had proposed that said forty-five feet from property lines that are but single family. My initial interpretation of that when I drafted it was that none of these property lines are but single family because they're next to red. However, when I read this code section more carefully after talking with Anjali, after the packet was published, you know, it says the entire lot shall be deemed to be located in the R nine point six zone. And so if these are deemed to be located in the R nine point six, I think it could be interpreted that parcel two does a but single family. And then that standard would require a forty-five foot setback on all three of these sides, which when you look at the dimensions, this side is a hundred and ten feet long. So a forty-five foot setback would only leave like a twenty-foot strip in the middle that was actually buildable, which certainly is not large enough for the type of facility that's being discussed here. So because of this closer read and interpretation of this code section, I don't think that forty-five foot setback setback on its face is feasible for these size of properties. The other two B zone properties are even smaller than this one. However, the other thing that we should discuss is that these are internal property lines. And what I mean by that is, you know, HNT owns this entire larger property. So when you look at that ownership, these property lines are interior to their property. In some parts of our code, interior lot lines are treated differently than exterior lot lines. And in particular with commercial type projects where there's multiple parcels like this, you know, the application often comes in for work on more than one parcel. And so we look at the site as a whole when we consider things like screening or setbacks typically. But it's very gray in the code, you know, how how you would apply those standards, like where would the setback apply? Would it be on this lot line or this lot line? And where would the screening need to be located? Would it need to be located here or here? When we talk about the perimeter of the site.
Is it okay to ask questions at this?
Yeah, why don't you jump in?
Okay, I've always been a little confused when I look at this map. What's the red thing there?
So the red sort of shading is the extent of the B zone.
Oh, okay.
And I've just sort of faded it out so that we could see through to the aerial photo to get a better sense of where things are located on the site.
And lot one is just looks like a driveway.
Yeah, it's actually a tract. And so, yeah, it's like the sort of fire lane access to the back of the site there.
And so also so busy sort of feeling confused and I'm not sure I caught what you said. Did you say that even the lot two, the one that we're talking about allowing schools? Excuse me, we're talking about allowing schools in the B zone, but are all of the lots partially in the R nine point six or just the three of them?
Just one, three and four. Lot two is fully in the B zone.
Okay, thank you.
So going back to what you said earlier, when you said you went back and you looked and and you found that it does a but a residential zone, are you talking about that little corner? On on parcel four?
No, although you could interpret it that way as well. It was based on a close read of this highlighted text here. So when there's a split lot, like with one, three and four, the entire lot shall be deemed to be located in the first zone on this list. So one, three and four are deemed to be located in the R nine point six zone. And so if they're located in the R nine point six zone, then I think the interpretation is that lot two abuts single family zoning.
Okay, and can you just give me an idea of scale? Can you show me in a roughly where forty-five feet is on parcel number four?
So, um, well, this is a hundred and ten feet here, so I'd say it's somewhere around the midpoint of parcel four would be forty-five feet. Carolyn, sorry, Mike, I'm just going to call on people.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
So you said that I think up to butts on residential property, but lot four is already being used for the church property, right? I mean, the synagogue, right?
Correct. It's mainly the parking lot and it's partially covered by the synagogue. And so that's another good point. There are some other code sections that make a distinction between single family zoning and properties that are developed as single family.
That's what I wondered.
Because, you know, clearly this parking lot is not developed as single family and it does provide a pretty wide buffer from these neighboring homes. So
But I'm sorry. But just following up on what you said, yes, the current parking lot provides a buffer. But with the change, that parking lot may not be there. Isn't that, isn't that right?
Well, the zoning would not change for parcel four because since it's split zoned, it's considered to be in our nine point six. And so it's going to follow those standards which are not being proposed to change.
Okay, so let's just assume that that remains the same. So then the screening would happen where parcel four meets parcel two. So we're not actually counting forty-five feet from the edge of parcel four. We're counting forty-five feet from so two starts, is that?
Can we come back to that in a little bit? There's a couple more things I wanted to go over. And that's a really good question, but I think it'll help to have a little more context.
Did you have? Yeah, two, two questions. Number one, when I compare the proposed setback of, you know, three AI of forty-five feet, and you said that came from the PI zone, why, why did you select that as opposed to the the thirty-five foot from the R zone for schools?
Good question. I mean, it was really, there was not a lot of science behind it. I looked through the chart I made and I was trying to see what were kind of the most common standards that were used in multiple places and that was one that came up a lot, particularly in the PI zone. I actually wanted to show, I have another image here. This is at a different scale. I'll say, first of all, this is the school district property that includes the high school, Northwood Elementary, Mary White Pool, Boys and Girls Club. This is almost ten times bigger. It's almost two thousand square feet wide and twelve hundred square feet tall or not square feet, twelve hundred feet tall. So when it comes to internal property lines, the standards that are in the PI zone, I think were set up because of this property. So it has several internal property lines. And I, I think I can't say for sure, but it seems to me that the intent there was to have some separation between these facilities. So that, you know, specific setbacks were established between each of these properties. And they're a little light. I'm sorry, I didn't trace over them, but there are these kind of grayish lines in here.
Kind of looks like there's buildings right up to the edge of the property line from my eye here, but
um, setback there. This one's fairly close. This is a building here. It maybe, I think that's actually like a portable, though. This is like a permanent building. And I mean, I think the thing to consider here is that this is a huge site. Several city blocks, whereas the HNT property is quite small. And so, you know, while I initially copied over the standards from the PI zone that were developed for this type of site, I don't know if that is appropriate, given the difference in scale. And so I wanted to really highlight that for you and ask that question. I think particularly the way the internal property lines are treated should probably be different. Like we said, you know, there's parking lots and things close to some of these internal property lines, which would be a similar situation here. The parking lots there, the potential school would be here. I don't think a setback is needed from between the parking lot and the building, the school building. It doesn't seem like there's a need to, you know, buffer between those two uses because they would be very complimentary.
I would agree with that. What I'm concerned about is let's put B zone, this B zone issue aside. I'm wondering what the downstream implications are for other properties that are combined and where we suddenly say, okay, we have, we have a different standard for internal lot lines than external lot lines.
Well, different parts of the code handle this in different ways already. So I don't think having a specific standard here would change that situation in a measurable way. Go back up here. So I think what I would recommend is just adding a number four down here. Let's say no setback is required from internal property lines.
But but I guess my question is, does that set a precedent for other properties that are not B zone properties?
No, it would be specific to schools in the B zone only.
Hi, Allison. I don't, I don't think there's anyone monitoring the hands up on the thank you for jumping in. Side of things. I don't know who's, are we allowed to jump in here?
Yeah, jump in. Go ahead.
I think the precedence already been set is my observation based on zooming in and out of existing school properties. There's, if you look at St. Monica's, if you look at Northwood, if you look at just about any other school property, the there, there aren't buffers between the internal lot lines. And I think it would be odd to require them at this site since there already is a precedent of them not being required at other school sites. So I wanted to address a comment made earlier that you know, there's no schools in the B zone. I think last time we talked about this B zone, there was some discussion that it's really am I still on this call?
Yeah, we've got
Oh, sorry, I've, I've lost you on my screen. My computer's doing something weird. Sorry. It, it's, it's a weird zone. There's a very small number of properties that have it. It kind of doesn't make sense. And and there's so much overlap in the lists that it's, it's kind of, it's kind of a nonsensical zone and staff have looked into it before and not been able to find any rationale for why we have the B versus CO zones. So I think, I think because of that, there should be some generosity of spirit here. If that makes sense. So I, I think I agree with Allison, I guess is what I'm trying to say, that I think that internal lot line shouldn't have buffers because it's it would, it would be counter to precedent. But that's, maybe I'm just biased here because I feel that the B zone is seems very arbitrary and there's no evidence that there was a significant reason why it was made distinct from the CO zone.
Yeah, Alan.
Oh, I think that something I found while poking around last meeting and also in preparation for today was, you know, looking at, I think, the nineteen sixty code. There was a business neighborhood zone, which was kind of, and I'm reading it here, it's like any use permitted in R eight four and R two. I mean, obviously those zones don't exist. Plus a few others. So I think that, at least to me, in my opinion, that's kind of the historical precedent. I don't, I don't, I think it, yeah, I came, I'm thinking it came, it's leftovers from that zone. So yeah.
Victor.
Allison, can you put that map, the high school map back up? I, I thought we just looked at this and we determined that the setbacks were being enforced with internal lot lines for Northwood. Am I, did I misunderstand your comments?
I think there, the setbacks are being enforced with the exception of this portable building.
So that's a temporary structure.
Correct.
There's no screening, though.
Yeah, there's no
I walk there all the time and several of the other requirements for lot lines are not enforced in this very recently built property.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, sorry.
If you can say the lot line rules are being enforced because you don't know what the decisions were relating to the placement of structures. So I'm not sure that gets us very far. Carolyn.
Since the standards for one zone don't set precedence for other zones, I think that in the case of the B zone, we should try to do something that's reasonable for the existing B zone, which is a real odd duck. So I guess I doubt that there's going to be more B zone properties created. And so in that spirit, I think that the internal lot line question could be addressed without and something done that makes it feasible for people to use these three small B zone properties. Something done that makes it feasible for people to use these three small B zone properties. Are the other two B zone properties consisting of more than one lot or they just one lot each?
One of them is two lots and one of them's one lot, the Sean's Bakery is two lots.
Mm-hmm, and that one already has a large structure over the two lots, I presume, or, or that is not. Not the case.
I can't, I can possibly, if this link's gonna work, pull up. The map, um, I think.
It's not critical to.
I think that the building is on just one of the parcels.
But in any case, I don't think it sets precedence for other, other zones that we need to be concerned about. Also, I'll go ahead and wait till you pull that up, okay?
Yeah, it looks like the building is pretty much. There.
Okay, um, also with the setback, you know, the, the draft says forty-five feet. But given that, you know, you were looking at other standards and kind of pulling something in as a starting point and Adam made the point that. Um, thirty-five feet is the setback for, um, in, in the residential zone. So I would say, you know, I would err on the side of generosity and say, go with the thirty-five. These are very small pieces of property, um, and that would create something more feasible.
Allison, do you think the, um, number of feet in the setback becomes relevant if we. Delete the necessity for honoring setbacks for internal lot lines?
It becomes a much less relevant, it becomes irrelevant for this HNT property. I think, let's go back to this one, so. Like this property borders right against single families, so with a property like that, you would then, you know, setback.
So I'm hearing, uh, that we've got two issues here. We have the question of the number of feet in the setback, thirty-five versus forty-five. And the question of application to internal lot lines. Um, does anyone else, um, or Allison, first of all, to you. Is there any other issue we should be thinking about with respect to the? Uh, limitations or restrictions?
This is the main one that I have noted, that I've identified as, you know, how should the setbacks be applied? I think. Clarity could potentially be added about where that ten-foot buffer needs to be placed as well, like. If there's multiple parcels held in common ownership, it should be at the outside perimeter of the site or something like that.
Yeah, okay, so we have three issues we should address. Um, let's kind of go around and see, um, well, let's, let's first talk about the buffering. Anyone have any thoughts on whether what Allison is suggesting would be appropriate or not? Victor?
I just, I want to, I want to clarify. Is your last comment, does that incorporate the issue that I brought up, which is where do you, okay? So it's kind of where do you start?
Where do you measure from?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you measuring from the edge of parcel four or are you measuring from the edge of parcel two?
Yeah.
Which I think is kind of a biggie.
Find my right map here. Um, yeah, I mean, I think if we added a standard that said. Internal lot lines require no setback, then it would make it clear that there is not a setback from these property lines.
But there is a significant setback from the residential park.
Correct, there would be a significant setback, it's currently set at forty-five, Carolyn suggested reducing it to thirty-five. Um, you know, if in the future. There was interest in doing something with this parking lot that was different, that would apply.
That, when you say that would apply, would you?
Oh, actually, sorry, this is the residential zoning, so I'm getting my wires crossed. At the residential zoning already has a thirty-five foot setback, so, you know.
So also, you, you mentioned the internal property lines, but the buffer would come under the same. It would make sense to not require the buffer either, right?
So what I was saying for the buffer was, we should consider internal language.
Lines.
The screening, um, we should consider saying. Something about if there's multiple parcels holding common ownership. The screening would be at the exterior property line or the exterior perimeter or something like that.
Is it held in common ownership or is it pro- parcels that are being used combined for a development? This is the question I'm, I'm a little stuck on here.
Yeah, that's a good clarification. I'm trying to think of if there's a word that would speak to, you know, a development site or a consolidated development site or something like that. Um, I mean, with the case of Hertz, all they're talking about having shared parking over here, so I think the parking lot would need to be included in their application.
I can't remember if the possible school is on one lot or if it's.
It is.
It is, okay, thank you.
Can, I, sorry, sorry, okay.
Just a minute, Victor.
No, that's fine.
Uh, thank you for recognizing. Um, I'm looking on. At the, the air photo of the other zone B property where Sean's Bakery is. And there is no buffer on that property to adjacent residential neighborhoods, all the landscaping is coming. From the adjacent residential property, it's, you know, except for a few shrubs in the. In their internal parking lot. There's really little to no screening. So I'm just, again, it's like the precedent thing, um. I, I just, I just want to just reinforce the idea that I think we should be generous here, given, um, the. The other B zone property has, isn't even using these standards.
Well, we do have current standards to require a. It depends, the width varies, but a ten-foot screen for many regulated improvements throughout the city. Um, there's another.
But it's not, it's not there, like if you look at it, it was.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, that building was probably built in sixties or seventies, so I don't know if the current screening requirements were in place at that time. I really don't know, but those, this, the, the screening requirement in, um, section nineteen twelve of the code. Has been there for a long time and it applies to all regulated improvements, so basically any non-single-family buildings throughout the city.
So you're saying that's an artifact. The other B zone property, having concrete all the way to the lot lines is irrelevant because. It was constructed before those requirements were there.
What I'm guessing, I mean, I don't know if that's a factual statement, that's what I'm supposing.
Oh, okay, thank you.
More than likely true. Victor, did you have something?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on Allison's earlier comment where she said that if, if there was a, I think you said a permit. Then the, uh, the parking lot would also be included.
So what I've heard the HNT team talk about is a. Desire to have parking shared with HNT and so. This existing parking lot would be where at least the majority of the parking for the school would be provided. And so they would need to do an analysis to look at. Um, you know, the number of people and the times of day when parking would be generated by the synagogue uses and by the school uses and see if it would be compatible to share. The lot and how many spaces would be needed for each use and, you know, are there enough spaces there now or additional spaces needed? Things like that, so this parking lot would need to be included as part of the application for the school for that reason.
But it would be included as a resident, uh, under residential.
I mean, they may or may not be actually getting a permit to change anything in the parking lot, they may not need to change anything in the parking lot. Um, but it would be sort of associated as part of the school site because the parking would be happening there.
Got it, and, and we had a public comment on this. Help me understand where in the process, the traffic study and the parking study fall, where, when does that happen?
That would happen, um, when there's an application that's submitted to the city, so. You know, if this code amendment is approved and schools are permitted in the B zone. Then they can come in for a building permit application. And at that time, one of the requirements would be to do a traffic analysis to see if they meet concurrency. Um, and if they're proposing shared parking, they would also need to do a parking analysis to show kind of what I described a minute ago about how. The timing and the uses would be if they're compatible, how many spaces are needed?
Yeah, Alan.
Uh, since, since we're talking parking, um, I was a little confused in the, in attachment one. Um, it, it mentions, you know. It, it implies that there is, there exists, you know, public and private schools shall provide minimum two off-street parking.
Yeah.
But I don't see it in the attachment to proposed draft code amendment, can you help me understand why it's not?
Um.
There.
I think it was just further down the code in the next section and I, I don't think I included it in the draft there because nothing was proposed to change. It was like the next following code section after this.
Okay.
Um.
I didn't hear the answer to what his question.
So I, I wasn't proposing to change the parking requirement for schools.
Uh-huh.
Um, that's already there, it currently applies to the CO zone, if this use is added to the B zone, it would also apply to that. Um, and so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's go back to my little summary, um, and maybe let's do a kind of a, go around the horn and see. Where we're at, I think the, the big issue is the setbacks for internal lot lines. Is there consensus that we would, uh, dispense with that requirement? Uh, for the B zone? Maybe, uh, I'll start with you, Kate.
Sorry, my mute on, off button is very sensitive, um. So. If I understand what you're saying, then when we're talking about buffers and setbacks, we're talking about the. Whatever lot line is adjacent to the residential. Is where those apply as opposed to internal lot lines?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on board with that.
Okay, uh, Adam?
I'm, I'm on board with internal lot lines not needing those setbacks.
Okay, Carolyn?
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
Uh, so just. Just. Technology, um, just to clarify, the lot line, the internal lot lines that we're talking about. Is the bottom lot line of two. The eastern lot line of two and the upper lot line of two, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, yeah, then I support that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, now is, uh, let's talk about the thirty-five versus forty-five, which I'm not sure. It seems to me thirty-five makes more sense, although it's not terribly relevant. Um, if we dispense with internal setbacks, but let's just kind of go around the horn again, Kate?
Yeah, I think, um, I think thirty-five does make sense, however, I do have a question, um, pertaining to the. You know, there was what was allowed before, and then if you're putting in an application for a new development. And I'm gonna express my ignorance on zoning rules here, um. Do you have to mitigate for? The existing development not meeting contemporary code, so you have like grandfathered a non-conforming. Buffer, and then you're applying for something. New, some new development, how does that work? Is there any penalty for? Other parts of the property not conforming with current code?
Um, I mean, it depends on what you're doing, like, the question you just posed is pretty broad and hypothetical, but.
Okay, let's, let's say someone wanted to like, they were only touching that, um, parcel number two. And that's, they were gonna build a tiny little school there and it was gonna serve thirty kids and. They buffered everything on the edges that are adjacent to the right of way.
Yeah, so if they're only doing something on lot two, it doesn't have anything to do with any of the other parcels, they would only need to. Comply with the code on lot two.
And then if they did something that, let's say they put some sort of drive-through. You know, a little circle thing or something between lot two and lot four. So I guess that's my question, if the, if the parking or a drive or something, student drop-off was connected. Or part of lot four. What would be the impact on lot four in terms of the fact that maybe there's not already a ten-foot buffer there, I don't know if there is or not, but I'm saying if there wasn't. Already a ten-foot buffer or thirty-five, I don't think there's a thirty-five foot buffer there.
Um, so, I mean, like in general terms, we have a section of code for non-conforming uses and. If you're doing something to a property. I believe the trigger is when the work will exceed fifty percent of the assessed value, that we need to bring everything up to code. Um.
So if the school, if the school construction project, the design and construction costs fifty percent of the value of all the lots. Impacted. Then you have to meet current code, but if it's.
I think if you're just talking about lot four, like, so they have a bunch of existing parking here. They're gonna be looking to show there's adequate parking, they don't need to add much more additional parking. But maybe they determine like, oh, we do need to add ten more spots and we're gonna reconfigure this lot, like, we need to do a little bit of grading work. And we're gonna re-stripe it and then all these things, you know, then we'd look at, well. Okay, what are they proposing to do? What's the estimated cost of that? Is it more than fifty percent of the assessed value of the improvements here? If it is, then we'd say, okay, you need to come into compliance with the standards, um, however, the slot four is in the R nine point six and so. I, you know, I don't even know what the standards are there.
The B zone, that's why I'm asking, because four's got some B in it. And I just, I'm imagining, you know, without a future, you know, without a specific plan, which I'm fine doing imagination games here, you've got to have a kiss and go zone somewhere, right? So.
Yeah, and they need a bus drop-off, I'm assuming and.
Exactly, fire safety stuff, you know, like, so I, I can't imagine that whatever happens, considering how tiny two is. I'm having a really difficult time thinking that whatever is proposed in the future is only gonna impact lot two. So, and you're saying it's the improved, not the total value, it's just the improved value? Because given contemporary materials, you know, I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, you get to that fifty percent of the, yeah, it's the assessed value of the improvements, I think you get.
You get to that pretty quickly.
Get to that pretty quickly, I mean, I particularly when, I don't, I don't know how they would treat the building here, you know, and I don't know how the assessors treat it when it's split like that. Um, so, yeah, I, I think.
And the reason, the reason I'm asking is because it sounds like there's an insurance policy there. That it's, it's pretty likely that you'd get to that fifty percent. In a major construction project.
Yeah, I mean, if you're building a new building, you for sure will, if you're just like adding on a bathroom to your house or something, then you probably won't.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted, those were kind of clarifying questions before your question, Murph, but I'm fine with thirty-five as well. Because anything substantial is gonna require meeting contemporary code. And, and it would have to mitigate for, and this goes back to something I talked about a couple meetings ago that. You know, the, the problem, the environmental problems we have today aren't really being caused. You know, if you have a built-out city like we do, they're not being caused. By little bits of new development, it's, it's all of the developments that have occurred today that didn't follow. Good standards and didn't use best management practices, it's the cumulative effects of all that, that's the huge problem, so. I think thirty-five is fine because you're going to get to that, you're going to get to that fifty percent point pretty quickly, and you might actually end up having to do uh some mitigation that's.
Yeah, Alan?
Um, I guess for setbacks, I would, I would support um emulating what's in the residential, so thirty-five from property lines, and I think it's, I guess I'm I'm curious also about the forty-five versus thirty on public rights of way. Um, if that would kind of mess it up significantly. So the forty-five is for schools in the R-zone versus the thirty that's proposed, um, but definitely on three AI, I would support the thirty-five foot.
Okay, Carolyn?
Yes, I would support the thirty-five, um, given that we have a couple of of scenarios to emulate in our existing code. The forty-five is for these monster public school blocks, and that seems appropriate. And the thirty-five seems appropriate for these small parcels in the oddball B-zone. No, that's how I would recommend.
Victor?
So given, given that I think we've all supported the elimination of the setbacks within internal lot lines, tell me where exactly we would be applying these thirty-five or forty-five foot setbacks?
I don't think they actually are relevant to this property if we're not talking about internal.
We're just, we're talking about a B-zone, and we just eliminated the lot line, or the the setback.
We said there's no setback for this internal.
So I guess, Mike, my position is, the question's irrelevant.
Well, there is other B-zone property that it would be relevant for.
That's correct.
That's the only reason. I, otherwise, I agree with you.
And we're adopting, or we're proposing adopting thirty-five because that's what's used for schools. And so realistically, the only other place that could be developed would be the property that houses Sean's Bakery.
Right.
And so if a school were there, then the setback would be thirty-five or forty-five feet.
Correct.
If it were.
From the residential.
If it were something else, if it were like an office building, then
there's not a setback.
There's not a setback. In this case, it's an, it's an irrelevant question, right? So really, we're only talking about shots. So, yeah, thirty-five's fine.
Okay. So then um so we need to address the, where the buffering goes, and Alison, you had suggested adding some language to make it clear that it would go in this case uh at the south side of lot four, if there's not already buffering. And then there would be buffering along the park area, I assume, correct?
Correct, I think you know, the outer, the outer edges would need to be um screened.
Yeah.
And what's the width of that number one there? Right?
Um, I don't know, I'm guessing it's around twenty-five, twenty or twenty-five feet. Sorry, what?
I think if you look over there, it's.
The first one is a fire lane, so you probably can't put buffer in the fire lane.
Yeah, yeah, it's literally like a paved road.
We can bring it in if we can't fit it because of egress or fire.
That's a good point that Anjali in the audience just made. Um, I'm just going to say it into the microphone for folks that couldn't hear her. So this parcel one or tract one is a fire lane, it's a paved road for most of its extent, and it's not possible to put vegetation there. So she said, you know, it'd be nice to have some flexibility about where this um vegetated screen needs to be located, which I think is a really good point. I mean, I'm struggling to come up with what the right language would be. Carolyn's raising her hand.
Is it possible that we could just lump the internal property lines and the buffers in same, treat them just the same? I mean, it seems like the places where you don't need the internal, well, the setback, internal property lines, is the same place where you don't need the buffer. Am I missing something?
That seems pretty reasonable.
And that, that one is thirty feet wide. Just measured it in the GIS system. It's that one, it just to understand, Victor, I think you were trying to understand, like, what does thirty-five feet look like on this property? One is thirty feet wide.
So there is buffering adjoining the park, however.
Yeah, there's a setback of fifteen feet. Actually, the park kind of wraps around here. It's, it's weird, like, over here is actually a parcel. This is washed out right-of-way, but it's um maintained and managed by our Parks Department, so it's considered a park. Um, so it's a little tricky exactly what would be considered right-of-way and what would be considered park. But for sure, this part up here is park. I, I think the whole thing would be considered park, in my opinion. And so then there'd be a fifteen-foot setback required here. Which is really the part of the site that kind of is exterior-facing that you're going to see from, there's a road that goes down to the boat launch and a walking path along here.
So do we have consensus that we want the buffers in the case of to the south, who would be on the other side of the parking lot? And to the north, there, it would simply be along that paved roadway or a fire lane and then buffering along the uh the park. So we'd have a, what, a ten-foot buffer in each of those cases, correct?
Yeah, so you're saying kind of along these sides here?
Yeah. And there would be some requirement that there would be buffering on the south side of the parking lot, if there isn't already.
So, Mike, why is that? Because the south side of the parking lot, that, that lot is all zoned residential?
Well, if the goal is to have some type of screening, I assume there's already screening there, given that's a parking lot. Do we know?
I, I, I think but the discussion we're having right now is B-zone. And and that's lot number two. I don't think we can, I don't think we can dictate what happens to four. We, we had a, we had a comment from the audience here, and I was about to say the same thing. I think I think that's, I think that's a part of a cup. When, when there, when there's a permit submitted on this, we will have rules in place for the B-zone, which is lot two. And then there may be some usage on lot four. And if there is usage on lot four that is somehow not consistent with the code, then I think there's a cup to be submitted. But I don't think right now, when we're, we're having a discussion about a B-zone, I don't think we can dictate what happens on lot number four, because lot number four is residential.
Yeah, you're probably right. I was just potentially getting ahead of that curve, but um probably for purposes today, we can ignore it. And stick to the areas to the north and east or north. Carolyn?
Yeah, I think for code language, what we really need to be talking about is where it's not required, because otherwise it's required. And so I think it would be quite a bit more simple. And it seems to me that it's just not required on internal property lines.
Right.
Is there some other place where it's not required? I don't think so.
No, I think that's the easy answer.
Okay.
Kate? Oh. Uh-oh. Did we lose Kate?
I can't tell.
She had her.
I don't see her right now.
She's, she's not currently logged in, so it could very, it looks like we have lost her.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, she's joining us.
Here, I just called out your name and you disappeared.
Yeah, my audio cut off on the Zoom call. It was getting fuzzy and then cut off, so I had to log out and log back in, sorry.
You're up.
Okay, so what, what was the question you asked as I was cutting up, cutting out?
Your hand was raised.
Oh, oh, I, you know, I was following up on Victor's question, wanted to confirm with Alison that if a, if a proposal were to be submitted, the residential zoning and cup would apply to lot four, and then whatever rules making it happen with lot B, if we make them, or if the council makes them, that would apply in the areas of lot two. Is that correct? Or would, is it? Yeah, sorry.
I, I think that's correct, generally. Um, the one thing that's running through my mind is, you know, this will require a design review, and if there is shared parking, I'm wondering, I don't know, I don't know the answer, whether the parking would be subject to design review also. I'd have to put some more thought into that.
All right, so Mr. Murphy, what, you, you were just resigning my hand raised, or?
Yeah.
Voting on something?
Yeah, um, I just realized that Carolyn has, has excused herself, and we've been going for an hour and twenty minutes. Why don't we take uh ten minutes and then resume? Because I think we're about done with this.
Will the chair be proposing a motion?
Uh, I don't know that we need a motion to, to take a ten-minute break, but.
Oh. Sorry.
But, but if you want me to make one, I will.
Right. All right.
So why don't we reconvene at uh, let's see, 7:35.
Mr. Murphy, can you hear us?
I can, yes.
A video has stopped for online participants.
And I'm, my apologies, Commissioner, because I paused your video while you stepped away from your computer. Let me turn it back on for you. Okay, I just sent you a message. There we go. Thank you.
Okay, so does anyone have any further comments, questions, discussion regarding this item? Victor.
So, uh, two, and then I promise I'll be done. So number one, if we could pop that map back up.
Just give me a second. I gotta share it. This one?
Yep. So. How big is lot two? Roughly?
Well, it's 320 feet on the long side and 110 on the tall side.
Acre wise, because my question is going to be, where exactly is that playfield come? Which one? Because four is a parking lot. There's a building on three. One is a fire lane.
Um. If, if we want to have Anjali speak, Chair, you should recognize her and ask her to come to the podium.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Please.
Okay, thank you. So if you look at the numeral three on the lot three, there is a lower parking lot that gets very little use. Our intent would be to screen that off during the day after drop off and make that an open space.
Hey. Without doing measurements on the fly, is that going to meet the quarter acre?
It does.
It does, okay. Allison, I think the language is on adjacent. You pop your language, yeah.
It's provided in one usable unit, a budding or adjacent to the site.
Yeah, and it does include a place surface, so it doesn't need to be a grass field or anything like that, right?
It's.
Does that really qualify, given its location? It's on the other side of a building.
It is an adjacent lot, though.
It's an, it's an adjacent lot. The, the idea would be, there would be pedestrian, there are pedestrian connections throughout the campus.
Okay.
And that's, you know, the, the two uses will be sharing that site.
Okay. Yeah, that helps. Thank you.
And, and then my, my second question is just, we had a comment about public input. I know that when we did the town center moratorium about a year ago, there was outreach to property owners. Where in this process does outreach to the neighbors happen?
This is considered a citywide code amendment, since it's not specific just to one property or address. And so the notice is just done in the newspaper and the city website, and that was already done more than 30 days before tonight.
Now, I thought, so that's different than what we did for the town center, because I know town center, there was an email that went out to property owners?
Um, that was done sort of as an additional outreach that's not required by the code.
Yeah, so are we going to do additional outreach on this as well?
Um, we haven't so far, and it was not planned. I think, you know, the commission could make a recommendation tonight if you so choose. Otherwise, my plan was to bring this back next month at the next meeting for a decision. And it would also still go to the city council as well, so there will be opportunities for a public comment during appearances at city council meetings when this is reviewed.
And, and I guess that's part of my question. I, it does, I, the, the public, I'm just asking, when, when is the, that type of public outreach happen? Does it happen before the planning commission or does it actually happen before the city council meeting? It sounds like right now there's no plan for that.
Yeah, I mean, right now there's no plan for it. We've done what's required by the code. And, you know, I think sometimes when bigger projects are scoped with the city council, they'll add additional outreach to the public engagement plan, but that was not done with this project.
Yeah, Victor, I, I understand your, your question because, you know, this is, while this is a a zone, a zoning code amendment that affects the entire zone, it is somewhat relevant only to one parcel. So I understand your concern. I guess the question is, is there, is there any appetite or consensus among the commission to recommend that there be further outreach either before the city council hears this or before it's brought back for final?
So Chair Murphy, I, I think it's not a question of appetite. It's more of a question of consistency. And so just, when we did Town Center, there was specific outreach by city staff to certain property owners. I'm not targeting the entire island, not putting something in the paper. There was a specific email that was sent. And I'm wondering kind of if, if this, if, if there's a need for consistency here as well.
Great.
Mike. Sorry, my mic button is problematic. Um. I, I'm kind of curious about relate, related to this topic, like the scale of the proposal, because when I think about Town Center and the, the scale of projects relative to the surrounding community, you know, you're talking about a pretty big scale that impacts a lot of people. So if you're talking about like, they reached out to neighborhood apartments or something like that, that's like hundreds. You know, it's a big impact on the city economically. It's a big impact on businesses if you change Town Center code. And when I'm looking at the school population on Mercer Island and the, the sizes of schools, it, it just seems like it's likely to be a small impact. Like I think Northwest Yeshiva has like 1% of the island school population. Mercer Island High School has 40%. So, um, you know, St. Monica's is 7%, Yellowwood is 3%. So I don't know if this is supposed to be like the size of a St. Monica's or the size of a Yellowwood or the size of a Yeshiva. Is there, can we get a sense of like what the scale, what the student population size would be expected to be so we can better understand the impact? Because if you're talking about a school that serves the same amount of students as Yeshiva, that's like 1% of the student population, it's a pretty small impact.
You're on.
I, I want to kind of go back to a question you asked us when we came back from our break. You asked us if we had any more questions about the draft here, and I had a question about something there. But I think now we've been asked if we would support a special public outreach effort in regards to this. So I feel like we have two questions on the table. Uh, so I was sort of hoping that we can just kind of get a little more focused and figure out what we're being asked here. And then get everyone answering and then move on to the next question perhaps.
The my, 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 my comment was meant to help inform my, my up or down on public outreach, like if it's a really small scale project.
I, I realize that, but I'm going back to the chair and asking, where are we at in our discussion here? What's our topic?
And we were addressing Victor's questions, and one of his questions about was about public outreach. So that's where that went from Victor then to Kate, and that's, we're still on that discussion.
Okay. All right. Well, when you're ready, I'll have a comment about that.
Okay. Uh, well, go ahead if you have a comment on that.
Well, I, I, I don't think we need a particular special public outreach for this. I mean, the city is involved in just doing things, making decisions, planning commissions, design commissions, parks commissions, just a vast amount of activity always going on. And these, there's a whole public input system available for every single action that's going on. So, um, I don't see the reason in this particular case to do a special public notice because we're talking about a particular issue in a very small part of the city. Um, I know that sometimes the council decides that there will be special public outreach for really large impactful topics, which is their, their right. But I don't think it's needed for this particular change.
Victor.
Uh, just a question for Allison. In terms of when we did Town Center Moratorium, we didn't reach out to hundreds of people, did we? We reached out to like 10 property owners, right?
Uh, no, we did a number of mailings to, I believe it was like 700 addresses and we had a email list. I don't know how many property owners were on it, but it was definitely more than 10.
I think it was a small number.
I, Sarah Blue was would know I was not involved. I believe it was more than 10.
Okay, so, uh, give me a thumbs up. Do we want to recommend or discuss further? Well, let me ask it this way. Do we want to recommend to the staff or council or both that they do a special outreach for this?
Are you looking for a motion or a thumbs up?
Just trying to get a consensus because I don't know if there is, there's no motion pending for that. I want to see if it's worth discussing further. It looks like.
See our thumbs, is that right?
Yes. Well, it looks like we have a consensus against spending more time on that. So unless someone wants to have a specific motion with a specific plan, then I'd be inclined to move on. Carolyn.
I have a question about the playfield language in the draft. Um, Allison, what did you mean by that the playfield shall be provided in one usable unit? Does that mean?
It just means it needs to be one chunk. It can't be split up into multiple pieces.
And then it says a budding or adjacent to the site. I think it could be a little more clear if it just said, um, maybe there's, I, I can't really quite wordsmith it here, but making it clear that it's one, uh, as you say, usable unit, one intact playfield, but then maybe make it clear that it could be on the the lot that development occurs on or an adjacent lot. Adjacent to the site seems a little bit confusing to me there. It, it is not clear that we're talking about an adjacent lot.
Okay.
If that's what was meant.
Yeah, this language was cribbed from another zone, so it was just existing language, but it certainly could be clarified.
When we get to a motion or something, maybe we can figure out exactly something.
Which, a perfect segue, Carolyn. Uh, do we have a motion? Uh, do we have a motion? Does anyone have a motion to approve the amendments? As discussed or as we discussed with modifications. Carolyn.
I move that we adopt the staff's um draft amendment for the business zone. Option B with um a change to the setback from 45 to 35 to property lines. With the proviso that the setbacks would not be required and the buffers would not be required on internal property lines.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
It's been moved by Carolyn, seconded by Kate. Deb, can you conduct a roll call vote, please?
Don't we need discussion first?
Well, we had our discussion. Uh, do we want to have more discussion?
Well, yeah.
Okay, Adam, uh, before we, Carolyn, go to you, Adam.
Uh, just a quick question. Um, you know, I think my my read on this is making it as consistent as possible with the residential school setback. So I would, I would kind of, you know, I, yeah, the 35 I'm on board with. I just wanted to understand if changing that 30-foot public right-of-way to a 45 has any significant impact um, in the spirit of matching as closely the school requirements from the residential. Um, if it's a deal killer, then, okay, let's let's revisit it. But if it's not, I think it's more defendable to keep it as aligned with the residential school as possible. Uh, that's that's the character of the surrounding zoning.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry I was distracted. Did you say you think it should be 35? And I hope that's what I said when I made.
Yes, 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 on 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 from lines that about single family, but I'm looking at uh, the second line below it. Yeah, I I'm like, I I I agree, this will not to be smaller, but I'm I'm kind of curious about this public right-of-way, which it seems like it's a very small portion.
What do you think that one should be?
I think to for consistency with schools and the residential, I believe it would be 45. Um, maybe that's a question to as I said, I'm just thinking of you know, I think if, yeah, it may be more defendable if it's you know, we pull instead of pulling one setback from residential, one setback from commercial. But once again, I'm unaware of how significantly that could impact the usability of it.
I would say doesn't matter where we put, pull them from, whatever we think is important or whatever we think is appropriate to this zone. I mean, it's not like, it's not like the existing zones are setting precedent and we need to be consistent. So for example, if we have some standard in here that's similar to the PI zone, and we have another standard that's similar to the residential zone, I think that's okay. I mean, I don't think that's, I don't think we need to be concerned about making sure that our, you know, standards come from the same other zone. That would be my way of looking at it.
Any further discussion?
So, so uh, point of clarification, is that a friendly amendment or? I think you put a motion on the table and.
I think it was just discussion. I don't think I heard a uh.
Yeah, just simply discussion. Okay, all right.
And I actually had something. Were you gonna come out today? Okay. Um, we talked a little bit earlier about the language for the playfield, and I do have an alternative language if I may amend my own uh, motion. Is that okay?
Your motion.
Okay. Okay, so, um, I would like to amend my motion to say um, in part C, playfield, a one-fourth acre or larger playfield, play surface or open space shall be provided in one usable unit, period. The playfield may be on an adjacent lot. And deleting the words at the end of the sentence that are existing there, deleting a budding or adjacent to the site. Is that okay with my second? Should I read it again?
Yes.
Oh, the last sentence. Um, the playfield may be located on an adjacent lot.
Commissioner Boatsman.
Yes.
As your official recorder, if I could ask you to restate the entire amendment to your original motion, please.
The entire original motion plus this or just the playfield?
The amendment, your amendment to your original.
Okay, the amendment. See, playfield, a one-fourth acre or larger playfield, play surface or open space shall be provided in one usable unit, period. The playfield may be located on an adjacent parcel. Got that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is that okay with the person who seconded me, seconded my motion?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, any further discussion? Yeah, please uh, conduct the roll call vote.
Mr. Vice Chair, the first vote would be on the amendment to the motion. And then the second vote would be on the main motion.
Okay.
Which motion? Moment, please. Commissioner Murphy?
Hi.
Commissioner Accuse?
Hi.
Commissioner Rishi?
Mine.
Commissioner Boatsman?
I.
And Commissioner Riget, Riget.
I.
Motion passes by zero. And the motion, uh, excuse me, the vote on the main motion. Commissioner Murphy?
Hi.
Commissioner Accuse?
Hi.
Commissioner Rishi?
I'm.
Commissioner Boatsman?
I.
And Commissioner Riget?
I.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Our final item of regular business is ZTR 23 dash 001 related to the permitted uses waterward of the ordinary high watermark. And Planner Molly McGuire is going to uh guide us through this. Welcome, Molly.
Thank you. Just give me one second. I'll share my screen. All right, is everyone seeing that? Okay. What's that?
Not yet.
Oh. No?
There we go.
Okay, perfect. All right, so, um, I'm Molly McGuire and planner here at the city. Um, and also attending today, we have Adam Zach, our senior planner, um, as well as Rebecca Paget, who is our regional shoreline planner for the Washington Department of Ecology, um, to help answer any questions if needed. Um, so the purpose of the public hearing today is to get the planning commission's recommendation on an alternative for the amendment to the city's shoreline master program. Um, here is where we are at in the process. So last month, we were able to get some direction from the planning commission on several proposed alternative amendments. Um, and today we prepare, we bring alternatives that incorporate those suggestions to you for a recommendation. And the amendment has also been through SEPA review and has been given a determination of non-significance. And the review process with the Department of Commerce has been started. Uh, the next steps will be determined by the alternative recommended today, and and I can go into that a little bit later when we discuss each alternative. Uh, so during the public meeting last month, I gave more detailed background information on the shoreline master program. But just to recap really quickly here, uh, the shoreline master program regulates land use and development within 200 feet landward of the ordinary high watermark. And an SMP is required for cities to adopt under the Washington Shoreline Management Act. And SMPs must be consistent with state standards as determined by ecology. Some brief background on the docket request for the purpose of this presentation. Uh, the Mercer Island Beach Club submitted an amendment to MICC 1913040 Table B Footnotes um, for the shoreline uses waterward of the ordinary high watermark, which would allow existing private communities to redevelop their facilities. And this is added to the city council, added by the city council to the 2023 docket. So during the February 22nd public meeting, the planning commission was presented with three alternatives, including the one proposed by the Mercer Island Beach Club, which is still included as alternative A. And then one proposed by staff, which has been divided into two separate alternatives as alternative B1 and B2. Um, the commission asked for more information on the shoreline conditional use permit process, which I'll go over in the next few slides. And then also requested a revision to the proposed staff amendment that would allow unnamed uses to be authorized through a conditional use permit to make the applicable standards clearer for applicants. Um, and then a more narrow alternative was also requested that would allow for larger docs to serve private organizations. And this is addressed under alternative B2. So, trial and conditional use permits are considered to be type four permits under the city code. Um, type four permit reviews require discretion and may be actions of broad public interest and decisions are only taken after an open record public hearing. And these applications require pre-application meeting, which is where staff will do a preliminary review of the application and make the applicant aware of any additional requirements based on the proposal. And then uh, within 28 days of receiving the official application, the city will give a letter of completion. Um, if it's determined to be complete, then it will go through the noticing process with a 30-day public comment period. Um, and then once the application is at a place to be in the review where staff can be ready for a public hearing, the hearing will be scheduled and the notice of public hearing will be sent out. Uh, so that's kind of how the overview of the shoreline conditional use process would work. So the city reviews the application for consistency with any applicable standards in the SMP like dock width, length, height. And if necessary, the city will review a determination of known net loss of ecological function and um, a SEPA threshold determination. Um, and then after obtaining local approval, the permit will go to the Department of Ecology for a final decision. Um, here are the standards that are in the WAC, um, that would be incorporated into uh, the alternative B1, um, under WAC 17327160, uh, which is review criteria for conditional use permits. Um, so the applicant bears the burden of proof when demonstrating that the proposed proposal meets all of the criteria, including consistency with the shoreline master program, not interfering with normal public use of public shorelines, compatibility with authorized uses in the area and with uses planned under the comp plan and SMP, and that there is no detrimental impact to the environment and the public interest. Um, and these requirements are also included in the staff memo. I know there's a lot of text on the screen. Um. Moving, continuing with those uh, standards in the WAC. Um, the review will also consider cumulative impacts for like actions in the area and ensure that the use uh shall not produce substantial adverse effects on the shoreline environment. Um, one important thing to note is that a shoreline conditional use permit cannot be granted for uses that are specifically prohibited in the SMP. So for example, in our SMP boat houses or floating homes are not permitted and would not be allowed by a shoreline conditional use permit even under um, the alternatives recommended. Um, so proposals can be denied, approved, or approved with conditions at the local level as well as at the state level. Does anyone have any questions about the shoreline conditional use permit process for now, before I go into the alternatives? Um, so alternatives A and C will be the same as what was presented in the February 22nd meeting. Um, so I won't go into too much detail on those. Um, here's a brief overview of alternative A. Um, it would allow existing private clubs or residential communities to redevelop their facilities uh, subject to approval of the conditional use permit and for standards from the SMP to be determined on a case-by-case basis. Alternative B1 is a revision to the previously named alternative B from the meeting last month. Um, the alternative was revised to read other uses which are not classified or set forth in this chapter and may be authorized as conditional uses, provided the applicant can demonstrate consistency with requirements of the WAC and the applicable shoreline development standards contained in this chapter. In the event that there are no applicable shoreline development standards, the conditional use will be reviewed for consistency with chapter 17327 WAC. Um, so this is in response to concerns raised by the planning commission for determining applicable standards from the SMP as there are currently no specific standards for docs of the size and purpose of the MIBC proposal. Um, and this would allow the, and this would be the more broad approach that would allow for any unnamed use to be allowed through a shoreline conditional use permit. Um, as I said before, when I was going over the conditional use permit review criteria, a use that is explicitly prohibited under the SMP could not be authorized by a conditional use permit. Um, even with this amendment. So it's also important to note that this amendment wouldn't just outright approve any unlisted use. Um, the applicant would need to demonstrate that the proposal meets state and local standards. Um, and this is a point out of the letter from the Department of Ecology sent to the planning commission earlier this afternoon. Um, a benefit to this approach as opposed to alternative A is that it accomplishes the same goal for the Mercer Island Beach Club and similar facilities, but it uses language that is more consistent with state law and does not contain terms that are not already defined in the SMP. So it established, and it also establishes that important link with the WAC for conditional use permit review. Alternative B2 is the more narrow approach that was requested by the planning commission to adding new youths to Table B. And over the last month, staff has gone down several paths for developing standards for any use, but ultimately decided that we would need more time uh, since developing new performance standards would take a lot more intensive research. We would need to look at how other cities are regulating marinas and check in with ecology to make sure that our standards would be consistent with state law. Uh, specifically the boating facility standards found in the WAC. Um, and then also make sure that these standards work for Mercer Island. Um, should the planning commission recommend this alternative? The proposed standards for marinas uh would be considered during the next meeting. And then this would require another public hearing since this option would be substantially different from what was noticed for this public hearing. Uh, both alternatives B1 and B2 would amend uh MICC 1913010 uh, letter E to adopt uh, chapter 17327 WAC. Um, and this is the same as what was uh, proposed in alternative B in the last meeting. Um, this would uh, this WAC chapter contains the shoreline management permit and enforcement procedures. And finally, alternative C would be to make no change to the SMP, uh, which would maintain the prohibition on uses not listed in Table B. The city is not required to make any amendments to the SMP, even though consideration of the proposal was docketed. Um, we did receive several public comments this time around, in addition to the one that was discussed in the last meeting. Uh, the comments came from the Mercer Island Beach Club, Mercerwood and Covenant Living at the Shores, uh, voicing their support for alternative B2 to develop new standards for marina use.
Are we receiving questions till the end?
Yeah, let's do that. I see your hand.
Uh, so the staff recommends alternative B with the option of choosing between B one for a broad approach or B two for a narrow approach. Uh, B one is consistent with the criteria for making a change to the code and the specifics of that is included in the staff memo. And, uh, should the planning commission go with B two, consistency will be evaluated for the next public meeting. Um, B two would require drafting new performance standards and at least two more rounds of planning commission review, um, including another public hearing, noticing and SEPA review. And here are those next steps, uh, kind of laid out next to each other. Um, B one would go straight to ecology within thirty days for their initial determination of consistency. And then once that is obtained, it will go to city council for a consideration. And then, uh, B two, we need to come back to the planning commission for review of the Marina standards at the next public meeting, and then it would be ready for another public hearing around May. And then ecology and city council after that.
Kate.
Hi, um, I'm a little confused about B two. I believe I was the proponent of the narrow approach. And I use the term boating facilities, not Marina. And the reason I use the term boating facilities is because it is already in the WAC and there are already standards for it in the WAC. And it would avoid that extra process that you're defining. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because I think a concern of the beach club is that if you don't point to something specific in the WAC that is similar to what they're asking for, staff is going to do a have to do a whole lot of additional process anyway. Because there are no applicable standards. So I don't, so one question, my first question is, why didn't staff use boating facilities as was requested? And then, um, is there really a difference between the additional public process? If you were to use boating facilities instead of marinas? And the time it would take to debate what standards in the WAC apply since it's open ended. And no specific, you know, all of the standards apply and you have to go through them, whereas boating facilities, it's already been specified. So I guess the first question is probably the most important, why aren't we just using boating facilities? Cause that seems like one and done.
Hmm. Um, yeah, Adam was kind of the driver, uh, behind the B two language. Um, so, uh, he can probably more eloquently speak on that. I believe he's ready.
All right. Thanks, Molly. Um, so boating facilities is a really broad category of uses. Um, we already allow some boating facilities, we allow residential docks. Um, and so marinas is a, is a little more specific to this, this proposal. Um, the boating facility standards that are established in the WAC um, aren't necessarily locally specific. And so if we adopt some standards for, um, a specific type of use, um, marinas, that would, that would, um, give us that local, um, uh, or that ability to kind of tailor them to the local situation. So the, the boating facilities and, uh, regulations in the WAC are not necessarily a one size fits all.
But the boating facilities in the WAC isn't residential, it specifically says not not less than four. So if you could point to an example where we have a residential, um, something that would be considered under the boating facility, that I don't, I don't know of a property that has four or more docks in a residential property. Maybe I'm ignorant, but.
Yeah, I, I don't have one off the top of my head. It's just, I mean, whether we call it boating facilities or whether we call it marinas, we will need a little more time to get, uh, tailored, uh, Mercer Island, uh, type of regulation. So we just.
So I guess my question would be, is that really? If somebody's approaching you with, at, at least it's a starting point, right?
Mm hmm.
There's a starting point. Some of the work's already been done because boating facilities are already has some prescriptions.
Right.
But if you choose to leave it open ended, there are no prescriptions and it seems like it would be an even longer process. And I know some people think it should be, uh, from a policy standpoint, we don't want to have to go over this again for another type, but I'm just not imagining another type that we would want to allow. I think we want to be restrictive with our shoreline code.
Mm hmm.
Um, to the extent practical and I don't know, I, I'm having, I mean, were there time and cost estimates made between these two alternatives? Because I'm, I'm struggling to believe that there really is a time difference between the two. If you're going application by application.
Yeah, I can't speak to how much that might cost as opposed to going through a shoreline conditional use permit process for a Marina as opposed to an unnamed use. I, I think that's what your question was.
Uh, Zach, just a follow up to what Kate was asking about. Um, or and Kate, you may know the answer to this. Um, with the, would a boating facility be also have to go through the conditional use process? Because the B two option, as I understand it, is designed to create a permitted use and avoid the entire conditional use process.
We can choose to do it either way. Like you, there's tables that say what the specific uses are that are called out in the WAC. And then on the Y axis, there's P for permitted. You know, see you, I don't know what the exact acronyms are. But it's a choice that we would recommend to the council. So we could recommend that it be a conditional use permit, or we could recommend that it's a permitted use. The easiest pathway for project proponents is permitted use. I'm sure that would be their preference, but I think it's worth discussion either way.
Yeah. The other question I have, Zach, is, as I understand the difference between B one and B two, with B two, we would define the criteria that we want for marinas and it may be adopting simply what, something along the lines, what Kate is suggesting. Um, whereas with the B one option, it goes to a hearing examiner, uh, who is, you know, who knows? And then it goes to ecology and with all due respect to Rebecca, um, it's, it sees, um, local control of what we have on our waterfront to the state. Um, i- in that, am I understanding that correctly?
I, I think that's a fair way to frame the difference between B one and B two. Uh, to an extent.
Okay. Victor, did you have a question?
I do. I, and I'm not sure whether it's the same question that Kate and you just asked, whether it's a different one, but to me, it seems counterintuitive that the narrow, the narrower approach seems longer and more complicated than the broader approach. That doesn't make sense to me and I, and I, m- maybe that's the question that, that Kate and, and Inter Murphy just asked, but I, I'm, I'm having a hard time getting my head around that.
Right. So the, the additional process, um, associated with, um, alternative B two is the result of the, the public hearing notice when it was published in February, um, listed specifically allowing unnamed uses. It didn't talk about, um, establishing a use specific, uh, performance standards in the code. And so because that wasn't included in that public hearing notice, um, we would need to hold another public hearing on this, um, alternative approach. Um, so it's not the, the breadth or narrowness of the amendment isn't what's causing there to be additional, um, process. It's just, that's a different thing than what we held the public hearing on today.
Victor, another way to look at it is that we would be trading a little longer process in adopting the amendments for much longer and possibly uncertain processes for the individual, uh, applicants later on is how I see it. Uh, Rebecca.
Hi, good evening. I'm pulling up my video as well. Hi, good evening.
Hi.
Thank you for having me here. Um, maybe I can help clarify a couple of things, I hope. I'll try. Um, one of them is, one of the commissioners was asking about how in the WAC, there's this boating facility language. And I guess to clarify, it, it's, it's more like guidelines to help uh, describe what needs to be addressed in the standards in the shoreline master program. So unfortunately you can't just like cut it, paste it and off you go, you're done. Um, so I don't, I don't know if that helps to clarify that point. Um, but it, it is something of a process. Um, it can be pursued, uh, through this amendment process or, uh, through a later, um, more detailed amendment process. So, um, I mean, there's definitely some different pros and cons to the two B alternatives. Um, I don't know if, if the city staff want me to speak to any other points, but um, I guess I'll be quiet and you can let me know if you have other questions.
Thank you. Uh, Carolyn.
So I have some rather global questions at this point. I'm just sort of trying to find my bearings in this issue. Um, I've heard the beach club say that they prefer B two. And I understand that. I think it's because it gives them something more definite where they feel that using B one with the conditional use permit perhaps is a little less reliable. Maybe somebody can maybe let me, let me know if, if that's confirmed at a certain point or if they agree with me. Secondly, uh, I guess, um, looking at what's most useful to the city of Mercer Island going forward, the more narrow approach of B two, um, certainly it takes us longer to get this job done, you know, quite a few more months here. Okay, that's some work. Um, but it gets us just one narrow thing solved and other things that might come under a broader, um, you know, who knows what people might propose in the future. B one seems to set up a, a rather broad approach that allows many different kinds of things that are currently not on the list that might come forward for change. So it seems like a more useful outcome to do something more broad. So anyway, these are the things I'm struggling with. Um, if anybody can give me any clarity or suggestions on those topics, I would appreciate it.
Uh, Rebecca, did you want to address that question?
Um, unless I would defer to the, to Molly and, and team, um, if they want to start, otherwise I'm happy to jump in.
Okay.
I think it's more of a, a city question, really. What's, what's the most useful outcome for the city, you know, to work with?
Kate.
I mean, Adam.
Hi, um, oh, sorry. Did you call me?
Yes.
If I remember. So I think the reason that I've been a proponent of B and, um, I, I understand and I agree with Ms. Paget from ecology that it's guidance, not a cut and paste. Um, my point is really that it points us in the right direction. It gives us a framework. It gives us guidance as opposed to nothing and.
Um, B, B one or B two, Kate?
B, B two. So if you, if you, at B two, um, in the spirit in which it was intended, which was to point to boating facilities. And, um, oh geez, now I've lost my train of thought. Um, I think, I think the reason I've been a proponent of the, the B two approach is because it's an oversight by the city to not have some kind of boating facility or Marina in the code. Considering we have three very large, reasonably large ones that have existed for a very long time. And so I think the burden should be on the city as opposed to the, um, three different project proponents, all of whom are probably going to need to go through this in the next decade. I think the burden should be on the city to figure this out. So it applies to all of them as opposed to all three of them having to submit separately. And, and maybe one sets a precedent precedent for the other. I mean, I could, I could get behind either B one or B two, if there's a preference by the group. Um, I just, the reason I spoke strongly about it is because I think the burden should be on us, not the three, not the three Marina owners, because it's our, it's our gaffe and not having it in the code.
Yeah. And I would add to that, um, in my discussions, um, I've come to understand that the city staff has has told the beach club and others that, you know, they can turn to and rely on things like, um, what you're referring to, Kate, and, uh, other, um, sample, code provisions in other jurisdictions to put together, um, something relatively quickly that we can move forward and not, um, you know, and have in place in a timely fashion. Uh, and as you say, then the other marinas don't have to go through this process or go through the cup process. Time and time again to not necessarily consist of results. Um, and, uh, and so, and I agree with the point that, you know, it really should be on us to define these things and not leave it for a hearing examiner. Um, or ecology to define just ecology role is, is one to simply review it and make sure it complies with the shoreline management act. Um, and as long as we do that properly, which is seems to be, we're quite capable of doing that, I'm confident. Um, then we would take care of this problem once and for all. Um, and I, I, you know, I, I share your concern, uh, Carolyn, about the, um, you know, there may be something else coming down the road, but, um, you know, I, I, I think that we should cross that bridge when we come to it. And to Victor's point about the, um, you know, the counter intuitiveness of this, I think that goes to the question of, you know, do you pay the price now and get it done right? Or do you end up going through the process multiple times? Victor?
So, um, I agree with, with, uh, both with Kate, Kate and Mike on this in terms of um, supporting B two. I think when we took on this docket item back in the fall, um, there was a very specific problem that needed to be solved, not only for the beach club, but the shore club as well as covenant shores. Um, and so I support taking, taking on B two as the most definitive way to solve that. And not taking on B one, which may or may not solve the problem for them, may cause, uh, may bring up other issues. Um, I'm a big proponent in the, of the narrow approach that has the highest likelihood of resolving the issue for a number of our facilities on, on the island. Um, I guess my question to, uh, staff would be, uh, to, to, to address the issue that you brought up. You know, is it possible to do the short term solution of B two and then longer term look at a B one solution that, that may be broader?
So the way we would do that, um, is we would probably end up addressing anything that we don't take on today. Um, we would end up addressing that when we do our periodic review of the shoreline master program. Um, and that would be, um, I've, I've looked it up so many times. I, I don't know why I keep forgetting. Is it twenty seven? Uh, I think it was, it's twenty twenty seven. It's after we finish our comp plan update.
And, and that feels like the more appropriate place to do that. Here we're solving a very specific problem and I would argue that we stay focused on that.
Adam, we haven't heard from you. Any thoughts?
Uh, I, I support the narrow approach. Um, I like the idea of us defining, um, those regulations instead of just deferring to the state. Uh, we know what, we know what will work for us here. Uh, let's not reference the state. So I, I would be in support of B two.
Uh, Rebecca.
Sorry, I just wanted to ask kind of a question or follow up on that point. So if, if I can just sort of walk you through, if you did the B one approach, it's not that you're like deferring to the state or that we're somehow interceding. Um, what the, what it does is it just. What the, what it does is it just any unidentified uses would go through the shoreline conditional use permit process. So it still has to be consistent with the local code. The local, the city staff would be reviewing a project as a shoreline conditionally use permit. Um, to ensure that, that it is consistent with that as well as the state regulations. Uh, chapter 173, 27, 160, as Molly reviewed. And that includes some very specific criteria. And then the city would be able to approve, approve with conditions or deny. If it approved or approved with conditions, then it would come to the state for that final review. Um, so I, I just wanted to clarify or make sure that we're all having that same understanding um, about what that, what that is. It does include the public comment process and it is a broad authority. To be quite honest, in state WAC, it actually states that, uh, the unidentified uses do fall under shoreline conditionally use permits. Uh, the only reason that this doesn't is because you have a very strict prohibition in that footnote. That's trying to be addressed here. So, um, and we can't supersede the prohibition that it's in an SMP. So y'all still have the leadership. Um, we're just kind of behind you and, um, you know, helping to ensure consistency. The other thing is the city still has to make a determination. Um, as assuming that it goes down the speed to route with boating facilities or whatever you want to call it. Um, and whatever approach that looks like as to whether it is a permitted. You know, what is a permitted activity or if it is a shoreline conditionally use permit? Um, and then what all of those criteria are that fit for your specific community. So yes, it has to be consistent with the state regs and all that, but, but you, you do have a lot of latitude here. So I hope that's obvious. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Rebecca. That's very, very helpful. I think that final point is very helpful for us to understand that. I think at least from my perspective, the B two route we're talking about is a permitted use, not a conditional use process. Uh, it doesn't have to be, I agree, but.
It could be either, sir.
Yeah. And, and that's the, the certainty aspect that I think the different facilities on the island are looking for, um, for the future.
Yeah, it provides a permitting pathway. And I, I, I agree, having some permitting certainty is very helpful for your community.
Yeah. Hey.
Is it preemptive to propose a motion to select alternative B two?
No, I think this is the perfect time to do that unless we have further discussion. Which I don't think we're.
I'd like to propose a motion then, vice chair, to support alternative B two.
Okay.
And would that be for a permitted use?
For a permitted use.
Yes. Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands. Can we conduct, Deb, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Murphy?
Hi.
Commissioner Akus?
I.
Commissioner Boatsman?
I.
Commissioner Rishis?
I.
And Commissioner Rigdon?
I.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. I believe now we are in the home stretch here on other business. Is there a deputy director report?
I'll keep it very brief. Um, our next meeting is April 26th and since we completed our first item tonight, the business zone that will be moving forward to the city council and, um, we will be working on this shoreline item to bring back uh, an updated draft with, uh, some marina guidelines.
Just one clarification. I think we have a meeting next week.
Oh, good point. Thank you. Um, there is, there's a joint meeting with the design commission next week for a training with Jurassic Parliament on, um, uh, what's it called?
Parliamentary.
Parliamentary procedure. Thank you. I guess I'm tired. The point I wanted to make about the SMP process is that we need to make a decision on when we want to hold the next public hearing. If we do the public noticing, if we send it to the newspaper tomorrow, the soonest we could have the public hearing would be the first week of May. Um, that would be a special meeting. So we could look at the first Monday in May or the first Wednesday in May or the second Wednesday in May. I wanted to see if, we don't have all of our commissioners here tonight, but I wanted to see if there was availability for a special meeting so that we could move this along more quickly. We checked the exact dates. So it would either be May 3rd or May 10th. The regular meeting in May is the 24th. So we could also hold the public hearing on the 24th, though it would add a couple of weeks to the timing.
What, what does that push due to the applicant's ability to, to do something this summer?
Yeah. Um, I mean, there's still many steps in this process before this code amendment could be completed. So once the planning commission finalizes the recommendation, it will go to city council for two readings. Once they, um, approve the amendment, well, hold on, I missed a step. Okay. So once the planning commission makes this recommendation, it's going to go to ecology for preliminary review. They're gonna look at it for 30 days. They'll let us know if there's any major problems. We'll have an opportunity to make revision, revisions if we need to before sending it to the city council. Once the city council finalizes there and approves their version, it will go back to ecology for a final review. And once ecology completes that and publishes the amendment, then it can become effective. So that's, I think, a two, three month process, um, after the planning commission completes its work. So I don't know how much a two week
Right.
difference makes right now for the applicants. You guys could ask them that if you wanted to.
When are the May council meetings?
The May city council meetings?
Yeah.
They would be
The second and 16th.
If we're just talking about a couple of weeks and it's not that big of a deal, it makes sense to me to have it with our regular May meeting if, if possible. Instead of a special.
What's the staff recommendation?
Yeah.
It doesn't make too much difference to us. I mean, it's always simpler to just do everything on the regular meeting date. But, you know, we were trying to be accommodating for the beach club and move things as quickly as we could. And that was why I was looking at what would be the soonest we could hold it with our public noticing requirement.
I'm not opposed to, uh, May 3rd or May 10th myself. I don't know about anybody else.
I'm available as well, and I'm just curious if staff could share what the current, um, I don't know if you track this or not, but what do you anticipate the length of time if it were a permitting, a permitted use that it would take for a permit to go through? Um, assuming everything was done perfectly on the first draft.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, typically they take a couple, two, three rounds of review, review often. And the first round of review, I, this isn't a current allowed use. I don't know what the timeline would be, but it would be several weeks for the first round of review. And then if there's sequence of metals, they each add on time. So you know, maybe six weeks could be the very, very fastest if they turned in something perfect on the first try, but more typically it would be longer than that.
Commissioners, I would like to share that there is, um, a design commission meeting tentatively scheduled for May 3rd. I don't know if there's anything on the docket for that date, but that meeting is still scheduled.
Would, is it? This would be the only agenda item. A public hearing on this would be the only agenda.
That's correct. And so it might be pretty brief.
Could be like 15 minutes. And so would it be possible to just accomplish the whole thing through Zoom?
We have to have an in-person option, at least with some staff people here to accommodate public comment, but you all could be on Zoom if you wanted to.
Okay. But given the fact that let's just look at our public input tonight. It was, let's assume that it'll be similar. So, you know, we could probably do a 15 minute meeting and we could probably be either.
Yeah, I mean, assuming, you know, we bring you a draft next month. We narrow it down to maybe a few final changes and then you look at it in May and you say, it looks great. You know, it could be pretty quick.
So I'm, I'm available on the third or, or the 10th.
I've, I'm not aware of any conflicts.
Okay. Given the conflict with, or the potential conflict with the design commission on the third, I'm thinking it would make most sense to set the meeting for the 10th. That seems, you know, it gives us a tiny bit more time also in terms of getting the noticing prepared and everything and that seems really doable.
Okay, I'm just a quick question about, sorry. You know, we do these hybrid meetings with council sometimes. Do the commissions ever do hybrid meetings? Because this is such a short topic.
What do you mean by a hybrid meeting?
Like sometimes we have a, or maybe it's a joint meeting, not a hybrid meeting.
Um, we do sometimes have joint meetings with the city council. Sometimes for study sessions, if there's information being presented that we want to see, we want both bodies to see at the same time. However, with this formal legislative process, I think we do need to have separate meetings.
Okay. And then this wouldn't be, it's not like you just stack the meetings on top of each other and it's not, the design commission doesn't have, this isn't their business, so it doesn't make sense to come by them.
Yeah, yeah, I thought you meant the city council, but yeah, we would not hold a joint design.
Thank you so much. Probably could have answered my own question, but my brain isn't working anymore.
That's all right.
So it sounds like there's a consensus on the 10th for a special meeting.
Yeah. So I'll send out some information to the full commission about that tomorrow and we'll get started on preparing the noticing to get that in the schedule. Great. That's all I have for the deputy director's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any planned absences for the next couple of meetings? Doesn't sound like it. Okay. The next scheduled meeting is a special meeting on March 29th and then, uh, the May 10th one we're talking about, and then April 26th, uh, at 6:00 PM. Is the March 29th meeting at, uh, 6:00 PM also?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for the good of the order from anyone? No, there being no other business to come before the planning commission. The time is now 8:44 PM and the meeting is adjourned. Uh, as a reminder to the commissioner, please stay seated until staff has terminated the broadcast. Good evening and, uh, thank you for joining us and attending.